Call our council work session to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Jacobs, Morrissey.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Lynn.
Here.
Amos.
Here.
Schmidt, Welker.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the agenda. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, that motion passes. We're here today for the overview of the lane reduction on Park Avenue with the parking protected bike lanes. Sandy, I guess it's all yours.
Right. This is just going to be a quick overview of, we've actually been working on this for years. VanderWaal even started it with us probably, I don't know, five, six years ago. Lately, it's been, now that biking is more popular, we've kind of had a push to get this done. And this is a proposed project, and what we are doing is we're taking four lanes of Park Avenue, reducing it down to two. And we're going to install five-foot directional bicycle lanes. The bicycles must, will be riding the same direction as traffic. The bicycle lanes will be parking protected. And parking stalls will separate the bicyclists from the traffic. Eventually, the speed limit will be reduced. We need to kind of watch this and study it because it's 30 miles per hour now on Park Avenue. We would like to reduce it to at least 25, so it'll be the same as Fourth Street. That takes an ordinance change, so I would have to bring that before you. There will be a safety buffer between the bicycle lanes and traffic. And also, there will be special treatments at the intersections approaches such as right-only turn lanes and charrels. Those are the bikes on the street. Parking spots will be relocated as necessary to accommodate the bicycle lane operation. And just Franklin to Walnut, we're really not doing yet. We're just putting charrels in because that bike trail hasn't been extended from Martin Luther King yet to connect. This right here is Franklin to Walnut, so it just shows the charrels. Okay, if we can go back to one, which is South to Washington, what we're doing is adding a couple, I'm not sure if they're going to be parking stalls or loading zones in front of the grout that they have asked for, for a number of years, to help get people or buses in and out because the entrance is there. And then, as you can see, the bike lane goes, it goes straight across Washington. Could we go to number two, please? And it goes straight across with no turns. And then, can we go to number three? Thanks. This is Washington to Jefferson, and as you can see, we are protected. We're doing a right turn lane up at Park and Jefferson, up in the right-hand corner, with the bicycles moving over and giving traffic a right turn lane. We will have a number of signs up, so it lets drivers know that it's, that they will, that there are bikers and they will be protected. The bikers will know that their lanes end and then start up again. Okay, thanks. Jefferson to Commercial is pretty much straight, where you can see the parking is between the bike lane and the travel lane, so the bikers are protected. And then they, again, on the corners, have the right turn. This is between Commercial and the River, and that's pretty straightforward also. The bridge is just bike lanes with no parking or anything. Then we go to River to Sycamore, and this is where the bus terminal and stuff is. And we also have the right turn onto Sycamore, that the bike lane ends, traffic moves over, the bicyclists move over, and then the right turn lanes for the vehicles. Okay, then, next one is Sycamore to Lafayette. Is pretty much like it is now, except for the right turn lanes. It's protecting your drivers and your bicyclists that way. And the next is Lafayette to Mulberry. Pretty much the same way with your right turns. And then, when we go to Mulberry to Franklin, we are taking out the right turn lane only, basically. We are adding in parking in that block. And then we go on to show the, just the charrels on Walnut. We also, I'm sure there's some questions, and we've done traffic counts on Park Avenue, and it averages approximately 3,000 cars per day, so it's not, it's not real, real busy. It's busy, but it's not real, real busy. We also, this, this really hasn't been studied as a bike lane road. However, it has been looked at as a proposed project for a number of years. Input into this project has been the complete streets, Intercog, engineering, planning, and traffic operations. And I guess I'm going to leave it open to you right now, if you have questions for us as cost.
Anyone have any questions for Sandy?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have a bunch of questions, but I'll wait until the council meeting.
What is the timeframe, I guess, for this, Sandy? Did you, do you have any ideas as far as completion?
Well, there's been kind of a push to have it done by the Irish Fest. And so, I've lined up a contractor to come in on Thursday. If this is approved tonight, we have to remove the center lines and the skip lines. So I have a contractor that is pulling his equipment from another job to come in and start Thursday, if it's approved, which I'll have to contact finance people and Michelle to, to get that approved ahead of time. The cost on that's approximately $5,000, and he will use his own traffic control and everything. He'll just come in and do block by block. So if, if it is approved tonight, we're hoping weather pending, we can have it done in three weeks.
Any other questions?
Sandy, if, at some point in time, my idea of turning Park Avenue into a pedestrian bridge and having no traffic on it, will this be just wasted money? Or what's the impact of this? I mean, I don't, I don't think this has been real well thought out, in my opinion, but...
I, I don't know. That would be more of a planning and engineering question than a traffic question. We're doing it, we're not adjusting any signals, so there's no cost there. The cost is in removing the lines, and we are not putting in thermoplastic. We're going to paint everything, and we're also going to repair the, there's really not potholes, but cracks and everything, in-house to the street department.
On the bridge or on the entire path?
On the road itself, on Park Avenue itself.
From park to park?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Engineering or planning, what are the one of you two like to weigh in?
On the design?
You weren't paying attention, were you? What, if, if we were to make Park Avenue Bridge a pedestrian only, would we be wasting some money here doing this and then do that next year or something? What would be the, what would be the impact?
Eric Thorst, I think it'd just be the striping. The bridge has already had some work done to it, fixing some expansion joints and things, so it would just be the striping that they would put down, and that could be removed again if needed to be, so. Are there any plans to put anything else into the bridge other than striping that I'm aware of at least?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Thank you, Sandy, and thank you, everybody that's been part of this, because it has been involved, and it has involved a lot of planning from a lot of different people, different agencies, over the course of the last, I would say, at least five years. I know I've been personally involved with this since 2013, and as a project whose time is long overdue, this brings a complete street into Waterloo, it'll be one of the first in the area here, and it will allow for all forms of travel, vehicular, bicycle, motorcycle, transit, pedestrian along this way, and it will have connector routes, not only there over at the Martin Luther King and U.S. Highway 63, but hopefully also this will extend into the Fifth Street, Fifth and Sixth, and Third Street corridors extending out in that direction as well. So we have a great recreation trail system, bicycle trail system, and this is one of those things that just adds luster to it. And as I said, I, I've been involved with this for like five years, so it's not for lack of planning. As a matter of fact, there has been planning and planning and planning on this, and I appreciate and I applaud you moving ahead on this, and Mohammed, Intercog, and thank you very much.
And to answer questions about parking, I've been in contact with Megan of Republic Parking, and we will be working with her to, if this is approved, to remove or change out 28 parking stalls or meters, but we will be adding back in 26, so overall, we will only be losing two.
Any other questions? Mr. Harrod, we generally don't have the citizens ask questions during the council work sessions. You certainly can ask them during the meeting this afternoon, though, okay? Anyone else? Motion, here.
Second.
We have a motion and a second adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Let's call a Human Resources Committee to Order. Madam Clerk, would you read the role, please?
Welper.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. How come they got Mr.?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second on the agenda. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. That motion passes. Someone would take, you can take them one at a time if you like.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Attorney Center for the Arts to begin civil service process and appoint the events coordinator.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this request. Any questions or discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Van.
I have a question.
Yes.
In this position, it's going to take a while to go through the civil service process, I assume, since the incumbents already quit. So it's a vacant position, correct?
Ken Schenkel, Cultural and Arts Director. We would hope that it takes as little time as possible because this is a critical position and we need to fill it as quickly as possible.
But it's going to take a while.
Yeah, it will definitely have to be advertised and we'll have to do, we will have to do interviews and so forth and make a hiring decision. But it has already been passed by the Civil Service Commission. So it's ready, once, if approved by this body, it's ready to be advertised.
Okay. So who's going to do the work between now and when you fill the position?
Right now, we're using, utilizing a part-time employee that was on staff, which is not ideal.
Could you, could that person permanently do this job?
Absolutely not. I think one of the reasons that this position is open is because it's actually too big for one person. You know, I don't think that changing this to a part-time position is an option, honestly.
Even splitting it between part-time and full-time staff?
Absolutely not. I'm just being 100% honest with you. I don't think that this is a job that, that would be feasible or desirable.
Thanks. Anyone else? Hearing none. We need a roll call, please.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Hey, that motion passes. Number two or three?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion to, should we take both of these, Mr. Chairman?
If you like.
Like to make a motion to approve the request from the Chief of Police for authorization to promote a sergeant to the rank of Police Lieutenant from the current civil service list. And third is a request from the Chief of Police for authorization to promote a police officer to the rank of Police Sergeant from the current civil service list.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on these two requests. Any questions or discussion on this? Hearing none. We need a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
The motion passed.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's call our Finance Committee to Order. Madam Clerk, would you read the role, please?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I move the agenda and approval of the minutes of June 26, 2017 as proposed.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the agenda and minutes. Is there any questions or discussion on either of those items? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. That motion passes. Under new business, we have three items.
I can take the travel request if that's okay. Chris Peterson, building maintenance to attend a class. Now, Department of Public Health, destination, this is an online renewal, 615 of 17, and the cost of that is $240. Investigator Coontz, Hagman, Morley, and Sergeant Devine to attend class inside the taped suicide Sid's death scenes. Destination is Des Moines on 7/27/17. That amount is $470. Officers Weber, Mullenburch, Ryan, Coontz, and Zubach to attend the class on Calvary Press Street Survival Seminar. Destination is in Waterloo on 7/25 through 26th. Amount not to exceed $1,045.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the first three travel requests. Are there any discussion on any of those items? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Those motions pass. Pre-oths.
Mr. Chairman, pre-authorizations to expend over $1,000. Center for the Arts, $5,000. Field School Year 2018 blanket authorization of food purchases. Engineering, $2,287. Purchased tax certificate on tax sale related to the Delaney Creek drainage project. Finance, $82,059 for annual maintenance fees for financial community development and code enforcement software. Leisure services, $1,665 plus $45.88 for shipping handling for Major League replica hats and visors. MIS, $2,299.15 for annual maintenance of Dell storage networks. Switches. Police, $3,438.40 plus $65 shipping and handling. Repair of the Pelco surveillance pole camera. Sewer Department, $2,530. Two-day training for wastewater microbiology with filamentous bacteria identification and control. Sewer Department, $3,229.80 plus $50 shipping handling for four muffin monster repair kits for digest or complex. Sewer Department, $2,880 plus $300 shipping and handling. Replacement sampler head for the AS950 for Hock automatic samplers. Sewer Department, $7,757 plus $400 shipping and handling. One new hydromatic pump for the Tower Park lift station. And Sewer Department, $2,692.30 for six-inch HDPE pipe fittings and pipe welder rental plus fittings.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on all the pre-oths. Are there any questions or discussion on any of those items? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. That motion passes. And the bills payment this week, we have $5,424,258.94. That's 5,424,258.94. Second. Motion and a second on the bills payment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. That bills are paid.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjournment.
Second. A motion and a second on adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good evening. Good evening. Today is July 10, and I'm City Councilman Welper, filling in for Mayor Hart. He and his family is on, are on vacation and should be back on Monday, or be back in the office on Monday.
Did you turn your mic off?
The mic doesn't work, so we're using this.
Good.
Is this not working?
It's not working.
Oh, the mics aren't turned on.
Does anybody know how to turn the mics on?
Well, Chris isn't here.
Everybody's on vacation. My temp.
On the green light.
Tempurly.
Yeah. Be with you shortly.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Don't they operate those downstairs?
Don't they operate the mics?
Thank you.
Why did you plug your mic?
It's too bad.
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. Well, let's start over. Today is July 10. I'm City Councilman Welper, filling in for Mayor Hart. He and his family are taking a short vacation and they should be back, he should be back in the office on Monday. So with that, we're having Brian Martin, Associate Pastor of Harvest Vineyard Church, do the invocation this evening. Is Brian here? Oh, very good.
Roll call.
Please stand.
Do Welper first.
Excuse us, we forgot the roll call.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here. Thank you for that. Now, Brian.
Thank you. Lord God, we thank you so much for your mercy, your kindness, and your grace. We thank you that you woke us up this morning. Father, our hearts are beating and we don't have to make it. Do so, Lord. Thank you for the realization of our inadequacies, Lord, to the point where we know that we have to call on you for divine wisdom and counsel, guidance. And I pray that you will put the spirit of discernment on our leaders and those who you have called to govern us in this great state of Waterloo and Iowa and the city of Waterloo. Father, I just pray that you will continue to lead them, guide them, direct them. Give them all the tools that they need to govern us properly. And thank you and bless the people in this great city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rudy Jones was supposed to be leading us in the pledge tonight. He's unable to be here, so if you join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, pro tem. Mr. Schmidt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed or amended, and we have several deletions and an addition. First, I'll read the deletions. We're going to delete Mark Lane recognition for 30 years of service as recipient is unable to attend the meeting due to illness. Going to delete item number four, resolution approving a development agreement with Jason Grimm for the sale of property located adjacent to 157 University Avenue, and rescinding resolution number 2017-499, originally approved on June 26, 2017. After further review, the resolution was approved incorrectly on June 26, 2017, as the name of the street was stated incorrectly and the legal description did not match that of the county report. We're also going to delete item number eight, which was a resolution setting date of public hearing as July 24, 2017, to approve an amendment to the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance number 5079 to update multiple sections regarding the regulations for hobby farms, farm animals, and other miscellaneous updates. Upon further review, additional changes to the proposed amendment would like to be considered by the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission. And then we also have an amendment, item number three, to amend resolution authorizing sale and conveyance of city-owned property. So the resolution now will read, "Resolution resetting the date of public hearing as July 24, 2017, regarding the sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally located adjacent to 157 University Avenue to Jason Grimm in the amount of $2,000." And rescinding resolution number 2017-498, originally approved on June 26, 2017, authorize city clerk to publish said notice. And then also, we'd want to approve the minutes of the June 26. Or did you have some more additions?
I had some addition to that, Mr. Schmidt. We're going to table items 15, 16, and 17 for one week.
And then also, we'd want to approve the minutes.
And then we have resolution number 10. Do you have that, Mr. Schmidt?
No.
I do not.
That's what he's saying.
I don't have number 10.
I don't think I have any of them. I'm going to have you read.
Number 10 is resolution authorizing Traffic Operations Department to apply for Iowa Department of Transportation Traffic Safety Grant to conduct a bicycle lane traffic safety awareness campaign in the amount of $12,000 with zero city match. And that amount needs to be $22,000.
Let everyone get that.
And then we would also want to approve the minutes of the June 26, 2017 regular session as proposed.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the amended agenda and the minutes. Is there any questions or discussion on any of those items?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Lynn.
On item number eight that we're deleting, the email I received not long ago said that we should either set the date of public hearing or remind that back to the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission. We should take action. In other words, one way or the other, we can't just...
And that's what was proposed, to send it back to the commission?
Well, don't we have to remove it from the consent agenda, have somebody make that motion, and then vote on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
Isn't that what this is doing?
But this is number eight, and isn't there an item on the consent agenda also, I think, is what Councilman Lynn...
Right. Yes, it was, yeah.
We're setting the public hearing date, but we can't approve the, I'm sorry.
Resolution number eight is, according to the amended version, deleted with it going back to planning and zoning for further review.
Yes. But it was on the consent agenda. So don't we have to remove it and consider it separately? Somebody's got to make that motion and vote on it? I don't know. Mr. Zellifer, does that have to be done that way?
Yeah, I think this needs to be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately, at which time it'll be remanded on the separate vote if you all agree to do so, to send, to be sent back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Lynn.
We're approving the agenda right now, and what we are approving or attempting to approve is an amended agenda, which would amend anything within the agenda, which the consent agenda is part of the agenda. So in effect, what we're doing is exactly what Mr. Lynn is and City Attorney Zellifer are saying by amending the agenda.
We do...
We are capable as a body to amend our agenda.
We do vote to approve the consent agenda separately. So I don't know if that makes any difference. You're saying it's all the same, and I'm saying the consent agenda is voted on separately.
Yes. And Mr. Mayor, pro tem, what I'm just reiterating is that the consent agenda is part of our agenda for the evening. And what we're doing is amending that agenda, which the consent agenda is part of, by doing what we're doing to number eight. And I believe that we're also doing that for number four as well, aren't we, the Jason Grimm?
Yeah, I don't have...
So we're amending the consent agenda, but amending the agenda in, as part of this motion that Councilman Schmidt has made. And we're doing exactly, I believe...
Are we doing it?
What we want to do.
Yeah. I understand that.
Well, I want to set the date of public hearings, what I want to do. And if we can't consider it separately, I guess there's no way I can do that.
Well, hold that you can counsel decide. Do you wish to pull that separately?
Yes, I make the motion to consider consent agenda, item eight, separately.
Okay. Second. We have a motion and a second to remove that item to be voted on separately. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, that is done.
And then, Mr. Mayor, pro tem, I move to adopt a resolution setting date of public hearing of July 24, 2017, to approve an amendment to the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance number 5079 to update mobile sections regarding the regulations for hobby farms, farm animals, and other miscellaneous updates.
Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Mayor, point of order. I mean, we haven't even, we had a motion to approve the agenda as amended. It was seconded. We haven't even voted on it, and now we're already into the consent agenda and making motions on the consent agenda. We're completely out of order here.
I have to agree with you. And it did, the commission did request that it be brought back to them to review. So you're trying to make a motion to approve it up or down. Is that correct?
Well, I just wanted to set the date of public hearing for the, for the zoning ordinance that was presented to us in the work session.
And I understand that the commission would like to review it completely again before it goes before a public hearing.
But the email I got said they can't do that.
Who sent that email?
Eric.
Eric Schrader.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem, I have a copy of the email. If this is the same email, Councilman Schmidt, or Councilman Lynn. Tonight's agenda within the consent agenda is an item to set a date of hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment dealing with hobby farms. There's been discussion amongst some members of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission and Council that some would like to see additional changes to the proposed amendment considered. A commission member inquired about the procedure possibility for the issue to be brought back before the commission with a motion to reconsider. Procedurally, the item cannot come back before the commission by motion to reconsider, but the item could be remanded back to the commission for further review and recommendation by the council. And that's what this amended agenda is doing.
Is it sending it back?
Yes.
Okay.
We still have to vote separately. So let's just, let's approve the consent agenda without that item and then discuss that item separately.
I would like to approve the agenda as amended before we get to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem, Mr. or Councilman Lynn could vote against approval of the amended agenda. That would be, it seems, in line with what he's talking about.
Okay, Mr. Lynn. You follow that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve the amended agenda and also the minutes of June 26 regular session as proposed. Any questions or further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Jacobson? Mr. Jacobson?
Jacobs.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes, except number eight on the consent agenda.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes. Okay, very good. The motion passes. We have a proclamation this evening.
Now, wait a minute, though.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Don't we have to consider that separately to formally remand it to the Planning, Zoning Commission?
I thought we were going to do that on the consent agenda.
When you get to the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem, we have just voted to send it back to planning and zoning. So you've sent it back to planning and zoning, you're not setting a hearing date.
He's asking to have it removed from the consent agenda. Is that correct?
I just want to set the date of public hearing as July 24, for the original proposed regulations that the planning and zoning people approved and sent to us for action.
You certainly can do that, but I think we need to do that during the consent agenda.
Okay.
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 Now, any further discussion? Okay, it was voted on anyway. We have one proclamation tonight. This is in regards to the Korean War Veterans Week. I would ask that Sid Morris, Laverne Fishels, Ken Lind, Gene Holmes, and Paul Ryder, if you would come forward, please. I'm good. Gentlemen. Sid, don't worry. Ken. Paul Ryder. Gene Holmes. Gene Holmes, please to me. Gentlemen, if you have both sides of me if you like. Face the audience. We're going to use this mic. Is this working now? Can you folks hear me? You can't hear now? No. Oh.
I thought I heard you. Yes.
We can.
We'll do it the hard way here.
The proclamation reads, "Whereas 67 years ago, North Korea launched an unprovoked attack on South Korea, an American ally, and where..." attack on South Korea, an American ally, and whereas the United States, in collaboration with the United Nations, determined that the communist aggression had to be confronted with the armed forces. And whereas, during 1950 to 1953, thirty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-four American men and women gave their lives, five hundred and sixty-seven of them were Iowans. Whereas many Americans have forgotten about this conflict, despite the continued presence today of the United States troops in this volatile region. And whereas the citizens of Waterloo must never forget the pain and the suffering that lingers today for the men and women who fought with honor and distinction in the name of freedom and democracy. And whereas the Sullivan Brothers Iowa Veterans Museum is opening an exhibit this week to honor Korean War veterans. Now therefore I, Ron Welper, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of July 11th through the 15th, 2017, as Honor Korean War Veterans Week. In witness thereof, I hereby onto my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Waterloo to be affixed this 10th day of July, 2017." Would you gentlemen would like to speak to the... regards to this?
Well, we thank you very much, and it's been, I think, a real good opportunity for all of us to share our stories with the Grouse. And we thank the Grouse for doing what they're doing to recognize this Korean War.
Sure. Anyone else?
It's been an honor and a privilege to work with the Grouse, the crew that is putting on this display. They are doing a tremendous job.
Well, I hope I have a few items on display there. Hope all the people here can come enjoy them and see them. And thank you.
I think that about covers it.
Well, with what's going on in North Korea right now, this is really a concern to all of us, and let's hope that this is not a repeat. Okay? Well, who would like to have this? Sid has it, okay. Very good, thank you.
I would like to thank you for your service during the three more.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, is that right? The City of Waterloo tries to recognize its employees after having thirty years of service with the City of Waterloo. As you heard, Mark Lane was in hopes of joining us this evening, but he came ill, so cannot join us. But we do have Michelle Westfall with us tonight. Michelle, you want to come forward? This was about seven and a half years ago. The mayor's secretary was retiring, and the newly-elected Mayor Clark needed a new secretary. And I knew he was going to choose you, maybe even before he did. You're not only knowledgeable about the City of Waterloo, but you're also knowledgeable about city government. And besides that, I understand you work very well under pressure. Is that right? So, the mayor spoke very highly of you this week, and I have to agree with everything that he said. It's a pleasure to work with you, and thank you for the first thirty years. I don't know how much longer we're going to see you, but... But anyway, this is presented to Michelle Westfall in appreciation of thirty years of valuable and dedicated service to the City of Waterloo.
Thank you.
Now, they'll do that out of their own... Okay. It's now time for oral presentations, and we do have three people who have signed to speak first. So is Jerry Thornsberry? Those mics aren't on either?
I didn't like the mic in front of my face.
Oh, I see, okay.
They're green. I'm Jerry Thornsberry, 704 Sheridan Road, and please put five minutes on the clock. I stand before you tonight to request that you rescind the fireworks ordinance. In my neighborhood, the fireworks began in the early morning of day one and continued off and on through the evening through all five days, exploding even after the curfew hour was ended. Here's what I experienced. My nephew, who lives across the street, has cerebral palsy. With this condition comes very sensitive hearing. And when the... Even when someone speaks loudly, he'll cover his ears. And so all through these nights, he didn't get much sleep, and his stress level was really high. My backdoor neighbor went outdoors to ask another neighbor to stop shooting fireworks over his roof. And as he approached, fireworks went over his head. And it wasn't aimed at him, it just went awry. This man also talked to a neighbor on the other street, and they almost came to blows because of the commotion that it was causing. My husband has a heart condition, and he gets real agitated by these explosions. And another... After an M-150 exploded, my neighbor was pacing in her living room as she was trying to compose herself as she relived a recent incident with the loss of a family member. My thirteen-year-old Scotty was beside himself with fear. Why do I have to sedate him so someone can shoot off fire rockets? I called the non-emergency number twice after 10:30 to report explosions that didn't quit. After this mayhem, I began to pick up the debris in the... of the... from the fireworks in my neighborhood. The streets and sidewalks are still littered with the exploded remnants. And the asphalt streets have scars of where the powder burns, I guess, I don't know. I picked up what I could until... during the morning of July 5th, but there was just too much trash. Them... Pardon me. That morning, I walked past a box about eight inches by eight inches by twelve, and it was labeled King Kong. Inside were three used canisters. The box was on a sidewalk in front of the house in the 2600 block of West Fourth, across from the pond at the golf course. Litter was strewn on the street by the neighbors' driveways. And the next day, I walked by, and the box was removed, but the remnants exploded. Were still in the sidewalk and on the street. Today, we live in established neighborhoods with our homes built about ten feet apart. I am dumbfounded that this council thinks it's okay to disrupt the peace and tranquility of everyone because people are now allowed to buy and fire essentially a missile loaded with a variation of gunpowder all day and into late at night. How much did your action cost the fire department, the police department? Do you know? Will we know? I get that it's a tradition in America to celebrate the Fourth with fireworks, but organized choreographed shows are delightful, but the random shooting of fireworks is just unacceptable. The mayor's show downtown on July 1st was great. Sunnyside, July 4th was super, and I'm sure there were others throughout the city. Abiding by this half-baked idea foisted on us by our state lawmakers justified by either an increase of state revenues or a misplacement of individual freedom is crazy-making. I plead with you to listen to our fire and police chiefs. Consider the number of complaints received. I bet the number received to date represent more citizen resistance on this issue than any other in recent memory. Rescind this ordinance now. Save us from another round of hell for twenty-five days this winter. Thanks for listening to my words. I will ask you to please consider the many who will not speak to this council because they believe you will not hear their voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
From July 5th in my neighborhood.
Yes. Jury, you're not alone. I think I've averaged at least two phone calls a day since June 1st. So even though the council reduced the number of days that fireworks could be shot off, they shot... they've been shooting them for the last four or five weeks. So I believe we need to start at the state. The state needs to rescind what they have done. Because regardless of how many days we actually allow fireworks, or any at all, they still are able to buy fire plate... excuse me, fireworks someplace else and bring them in. We tried to reduce it, and actually, the citizens failed, as far as I'm concerned. We gave them a chance, and they blew it, that's right.
Well, we can rescind it. You all can rescind the local firework ordinance here, regardless of what the state says. They gave you that power.
Yes, that is correct. As long as you understand that they still could shoot off fireworks, regardless of what we do. Okay? Marcia Butch.
I probably won't need the five minutes, but Marcia Butch from 1510 Lyon Avenue, but I just get asked for that, just in case. This doesn't have anything to do with what she just said, but I concur. I'm a 1967 Columbus High graduate, and myself and a committee of ten have been working on our 50th class reunion for a year now. We've had to change the venue because one of the locations closed. In wanting to promote all that Waterloo has to offer, we chose to meet at the Brown Derby on Sycamore. It's an elegant event location, and we were excited that we would have parking handicap accessibility in the ramp next to the Courier Building. We mailed out our invitations and parking arrangements to all of our students the middle of May, all over the U.S., with a June 30th deadline. At present, we have one hundred and twenty-two classmates and spouses confirmed with more on the way, coming from all parts of the U.S. Some haven't been back to Waterloo for thirty or forty years, so we want to make a good first impression. And now we have a problem. We just found out that the parking ramp, some people might not know this, we would have been using next to the Courier, is going to be closed down till December for major repairs that I guess have been needed for some time. Also, the Fourth Street Bridge is closed. I was very much in favor of the updating of that bridge, though, I'll let you know that. Here are my suggestions that I hope the council will consider. The Brown Derby holds many events all year, so this would benefit them as well as us, and they bring in a lot of people to our city as well. Could the city possibly put signs at both the Fourth and Fifth Street entrances to the ramp suggesting other parking areas with a diagram and street names? Remember, some of these people are my age, and they haven't been here for thirty or forty years. So we have another parking ramp, but I don't know if there are open spaces there at night since many people live downtown now, so I don't know that situation. This could also benefit other events plans all year, such as Irish Fest, Pride Fest, and others. As to the closing of the Fourth Street Bridge, is there a plan in place to have that open on Friday and Saturday nights as they did for the Fourth Street Cruise? That would help out-of-towners navigate our downtown more easily. My era all knew about cruising Fourth Street, and I know a lot of you feel the same way. That would be familiar to them. I appreciate your time and would hope you would give consideration to my proposals, and I realize this is probably a somewhat a traffic thing, too, but just thank you for letting me speak.
Sure. Thank you, Marcia. Sandy, is that something that we can do, is try to direct people to another location? Work with Republic in regards to this?
Sandy Kriko, Interim Public Works Director. Yes, I will get ahold of Megan tomorrow and talk to her, and we'll get signs up and to help get people around downtown.
Okay. Am I correct, it'll be closed till December?
That's what I have been told, too. I don't... I don't know who has a contract for that.
Okay.
I can get ahold of Marcia.
Okay. And then, do you have something to do with the Fourth Street Bridge, or is that somebody else?
Eric, is there something you can help her in that regard? Eric, Garcia?
Probably not unless we want to pay more money. The specs allowed them to keep it closed. It's very close quarters there. They have to have a place to put their equipment. If we want to pay them to mobilize their equipment off all the time, we can probably arrange something. But as you all know, we were on a very tight budget for that project, as it was. And of course, we don't know of all the events in the city. We knew some of the really large ones and made provisions for them to have it open for those, but if you're going to try to have it open every weekend, that's probably definitely going to cost the city some more funds.
Okay, I misunderstood that. I thought I read that in the paper, that it was going to be open on weekends, but I understand costs.
You got one out of two.
Well, if you can help out with the ramp thing, though, that would really help. That was one of our things for going there, was the accessibility.
Okay, Marcia, thank you. Todd Oberdahl.
Thank you, Todd Oberdahl, 124 Amity Drive. We had an issue over the last couple of weeks in regards to the renaming of the Sullivan Brothers Center. And at the work session and the meeting two weeks ago, it was implied that the family was all good to go with the renaming of the center. In terms of one of the local television stations did a little reporting and found out that wasn't the case. It was very troubling to have someone coming in here promising to do all sorts of great things for the community and then deceive the community and deceive the families, the Sullivan families. I think it's great that we are renaming the plaza, the Sullivan Plaza. That's something that we can do on our own. We don't need to have permission from somebody from Omaha in order to rename a plaza honoring, perhaps, the most noble historical figures in our city's history. It's interesting that today on the agenda, we have an item regarding Sunnyside South. And here we are six years later, and we are now having public hearing, public announcement on a bidding deadline for the transfer of that property, six years after that starting point. You know, one of the most amazing things that I've heard in recent memory is the idea that's one of the problems with the city is that it's too transparent. I vehemently disagree with that. The transfer of property of the convention center is akin to the transfer of property in Sunnyside South. It is controlled by state law. It is controlled by an open bidding process. This process has not taken place. It needs to take place. We are told this is a good deal. We haven't seen the deal. We are told it must be done. We haven't been told why. I've yet to have my question answered, and I'll rephrase it with different numbers. Why would I sell a three-and-a-half million dollar asset that I can put six million dollars into and turn it into a seventy million dollar asset? Why would I pay someone one million dollars to buy it from me for a dollar? The City of Waterloo, it is important that we have... that we revitalize downtown Waterloo. That is very important. But at the same time, the city government, this governing body, is the steward of the city's assets. The city's asset of the convention center is not only the convention center itself, it is also the name, and it's our history. We are giving away an asset that can be improved. And one person makes a presentation, and the public is supposed to accept it? Not only does that not make sense, it's in violation of state law. Do we need to go through six years of litigation in order to get to the point that we're at with Sunnyside South today? Or do we do the right thing? Have public notice? Have vetting? Let all investors put up security for the improvements that are... or surety, for the improvements that they're going to do? Let's look at the profit and loss statements of the individual companies? Let's look at their balance sheets? Let's look at the bankruptcies? Let's see who we're doing business with before we wind up holding the bag for somebody Let's see who we're doing business with before we wind up holding the bag for somebody that's looking to take advantage of us? These are questions that need to be answered. It's the responsibility of this council, of this government, to make sure that we don't have another Tom Sawyer come into this town, pay us to build a fence for him, or have us pay him to build the fence and then we pay him to paint it for him. The idea that we would throw away our history because somebody thought it would be a good marketing idea. There's plenty of marketing professionals in this area that thought the Sullivan Brothers Center never should have been changed in the first place. Never even should have been discussed. It was a matter of opinion. It needed to be discussed. It did not need to be forced down upon us. And it did not need to take, we did not have to upset the Sullivan family members and make them run down here downtown for emergency meetings in order to preserve the history of their family and what they did for us. Again, we are a steward of our assets here, both financial and historical. We need to take care of these assets. We can't look for the quick fix. We need to have an open accounting of what is happening and what's going on. Where's that $700,000 a year that's supposed to be going to the convention center going every year? The public needs to know that. In closing, I would like to reiterate that according to Section 26 of the Iowa Code, there must be public bidding on the transference of this property. If not, it might be another six years before we even start doing the next step. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Kelly Angel. I live at 148 Terrace Drive in Waterloo. And I don't want to be rude. I'm just going to read directly off my phone so I stay on target because I wasn't registered. It's like my three minutes. Okay. My name is Kelly Angel. I live in Waterloo. I'm a mom of a three and a one-year-old and a dog. My husband and I live on Terrace Drive and we have a great neighborhood with the majority of our neighbors who can respect each other. I came here tonight to voice my disagreement with the current city fireworks regulations and to offer my support for a citywide ban. I have lived in Iowa my entire life. Not once have I ever felt my freedom or my civil liberties were ever oppressed by statewide fireworks ban. I didn't realize how much I appreciated that ban until it went away. I'm very fortunate. I do not suffer from PTSD. My dog was very annoyed by the fireworks, but she wasn't terrified. And many of the people in my neighborhood respected the designated end zones. I'm very lucky. My kids only woke up a handful of times in tears because of the booms. So what's my beef with the fireworks? Why am I here? Shouldn't I let people just have fun and shoot off fireworks because that's their civil liberties? Absolutely. But not 30 feet from my bedroom window where my kids are sleeping, where I've worked really hard to keep a peaceful, quiet home after 8:00 PM. On the night of June 30th, my walls shook. I live in a sturdy ranch-style home built in 1953 and my walls shook. The fireworks causing it were not even immediately my next-door neighbors. It was across the street kitty-corner lot to us. If the council hears a compelling argument to allow, to continue what we have, I beg you, please limit them to only the 4th of July next year and 10:00 PM on New Year's Eve and ending at 10:00 PM. And have them end at 10:00 PM because I think a consistent end time needs to be in place. Even dispatchers and chatter on the police scanner revealed slight confusion in which nights had the end time. And fireworks are fun. I enjoy going to fireworks displays. But consumer fireworks should be done outside city limits where there is potentially less people living in one square block and people are being subjected to a fireworks show they didn't want in the first place due to the loud and sometimes chaotic nature of fireworks. They should not be allowed in the city. Again, my overall concern lies in the noise and disturbance the fireworks cause, even in allowable times and designated days. Here's another way to look at it. Experts agree that hearing loss can occur at just 85 decibels. According to Dynamite Fireworks, a firework can exceed 150 decibels. Commercial fireworks reach high into the sky after exploding transmit a much weaker sound to the veers in the ground, of course. But consumer fireworks, which is the ones we hear all night long, explode very close to the ground level, typically have a lower maximum decibel level but can actually sound louder. So in conclusion, please do not feel you're robbing anyone of a civil liberty or freedom in this town by having a citywide ban. Make it easier on yourselves and the Waterloo residents and police force by making it clear fireworks should not be used within city limits. Thank you for your time and consideration when this can come up again for your consideration.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. I was just going to say that one of my friends dropped off some newspapers from Des Moines, Iowa City and Cedar Rapids, and the people in those communities feel the same way that you do. And that's what I'm saying, that it hasn't, every city, regardless of how many days they actually allowed fireworks to be shot, it hasn't mattered. When fireworks went on sale on June 1st, people weren't going to wait until July 4th to fire them off. They started using them right away. So even though the city allowed fireworks for only five days, we've had fireworks for five weeks. So again, I'm going back to the state who's going to have to do something in regards to this. Go ahead.
And I worry about the holidays. December 10th to the 1st.
I need your name and address.
Oh, Sally Preby, Home Park Boulevard.
Go ahead.
And I read December 10th. Well, that means Thanksgiving's going to start them. I never got to bed before too because my dog wouldn't go outside. I live where homes are close. There's a lot of trees and these fireworks were going up in the trees, bottle rockets. People were drunk and high, shooting them off around little kids. And what I can't understand is how they went from shooting them off the bridge with additional safety measures and professionals shooting them to saying, hey, everybody get in the business here. I don't understand that. But when I read about the upcoming Christmas, I just thought, God, if I could go away somewhere, I would. I just think it's not fair to the rest of us. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Heidi Footman. I lead the youth art team, which is a group of students from Waterloo and Cedar Falls. I'm here with Angela Weszczuk in the back. We're starting to lead a summer camp for a project that we're really excited about and we've been here before, the 4th Street Bridge mural. So I'm really just here to introduce these guys who have a little update for you and would like to extend an invitation. And just in case anybody in the room doesn't know, the artwork on the walls in here was created by the youth art team and we feel really honored to have them on display here. And I'm going to turn it over to these guys, okay?
Hi, I'm Savannah Willard and this is my first year with the art team. Today was the first day of our camp and I'm going to be showing you some of the things that we did. So we went down to the riverfront and we started sketching. We sketched some ideas, what we felt and what we saw when we went down. And we got to see part of the construction that went on. We also did some patterns. We created patterns and do you want to show that too? We created patterns and then Heidi took our patterns and she photocopied them and we expanded them in size.
Good.
So we made a couple of them. Everybody in the camp made some and we thought this would be cool to incorporate and we're going to include lots of color and hopefully a lot of feelings when we make this mural.
Savannah, can you tell them, you guys spent a little time brainstorming how you want people to feel when they see your artwork, when they actually go on the bridge? Can you share a little bit about what people thought?
Well, we wanted it to be really colorful and we wanted it to be kind of bringing people together. So we thought about like peacefulness and happiness when we create this piece.
Do any of you guys want to share something that we did today that you learned about our city or about what you're excited about for the mural? You want to do that? Go ahead, say your name.
My name is Viviana and I am excited about doing the mural because it brings us together as a team and it'd be very colorful.
Okay, so Landra, you want to come and tell them what we have planned for Friday?
Hello, my name is Landra Cooper and this is my second year being in the youth art team. Well, now right here, I got in my hands our papers about the youth art team. We have a party Friday. It will be beer, floats, and lemonade. It will start at 11:30 AM and it will end at 12:05. It will be July 14th Friday and we will show our artwork and tell y'all how we feel about, how we like feel when we make artwork and stuff.
Okay, so this is like an unveiling for you guys of the mural that they will have completed by Friday. So we just started designing. We're going to keep working on that and we're going to have it all done for Friday. So we'd like, love for you guys to all come. Beer, floats, lemonade. And Emma, you want to?
And I'm Emma. I just want to say thanks for listening to us. We're really excited about it.
Heidi, 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 where will this take place?
The camp or the party? It's on this card. It's at ID8 Workspace at 402 East 4th Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, these are the horizontal boards we're talking about that they'll be painting, correct?
Right. And it's just for one section of the bridge. We're just starting in a small, one small section. So they'll be painted by that time, but they won't be installed. That will happen later when the bridge is ready.
So you paint them separately and then they attach them to the bridge?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. Well, good luck with that project.
Thank you. Thanks for all your support on that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
My name is Cheryl Peters-Rammelsberg and I live over on West Mullen, 934 West Mullen. And I have, I'm going to talk about fireworks, but I think I have a little bit different of a view of what's going on. In my other life, which means in my working life, I was a licensed mental health counselor and I did a lot of work with veterans with PTSD and even with other mental health issues. What has happened, like you said, they've been shooting those fireworks off ever since June 1st. And I know, I have had to walk men and women through some of that stuff. And that is very inappropriate that this state and this city would think so little of their veterans and their disabled people that they would allow this to go on unchecked. Except I do have to say, the Waterloo Police Department has done a wonderful job in trying to stop this. But I mean, it goes on over in my neighborhood, what, from 5:00 in the morning until 5:00 the next morning? Now, I also come at this as a pet parent. When I have a 96-pound Doberman that hides in the bushes because it's going bum, 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 that's getting pretty bad. And we put up, we try to be good neighbors. We put up a six-foot fence in our backyard because my husband's dog can crawl over a four-foot one. We don't put them out early. We don't put them out late. We try to be very aware of that. And I've had three dogs now that absolutely would not go outside. And since we've invested all that money to keep all that outside, I do not appreciate my house smelling like urine and dog poop. I mean, I'm just going to be very blunt. And I'm like, she said, that scares the hell out of me that you're going to let them do this starting December 10th and going after the 1st of January. I never needed to have firecrackers. I don't know why they do. All they do is throw firecrackers around and drink or drug. So I strongly support that we do as Dubuque has done and just ban it from Waterloo, from the inside of Waterloo, you know, in the city limits of Waterloo. Just ban it. And according to my Facebook, I'm not alone. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Good evening and thank you for your time. I appreciate all of you allowing me to speak. My name is Kirby Sherman and I live at 609 Dundee in Waterloo here. I have been a resident here since 1972, so I'm well aware of what happens in the city of Waterloo. I've been involved in many parts of the city and again, I appreciate your time. I think everyone has covered pretty much the same thing with the fireworks in regards to that it started early and lasted all evening and sometimes well into the night. And I do want to say thank you to the police department for the help that they have given in enforcing the law as it stands and also to the fire department for the cases that they were sent out on. I have animals myself. They were affected by it, but I also am concerned about the wildlife in the area. I'm one of those crazy people who feeds the birds and the squirrels and everything else and spends half my money on making sure that they all have good food and good times at my house. And suddenly, there's no one coming to my feeders. Ever since the fireworks have started, the wildlife has been affected. I'm not sure what's going on with them, if they're starving, if they've left the area, but it does concern me. People's pets are affected, people's lives are affected, as Cheryl spoke of, and the wildlife is affected, which we don't even know on what level. And I would appreciate the opportunity to speak again if there's going to be some kind of a hearing in regards to how this has affected the lives of the people in Waterloo. I know you all have good hearts and I know you serve well in our community and that you will do what's best for the community itself. And again, thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you.
David Dreyer, 3145 West 4th Street. I have to applaud Todd Oberdahl for his comments about the Five Sullivan Brothers. In the call to Courier, there was a suggestion about renaming it Waterloo Five Sullivan Convention Center. I like that. That includes, instead of just saying "part of" the plaza, it includes the Five Sullivan Brothers in that name. I'm concerned about the agreement. According to the agenda, this will be discussed on the 17th. However, at that time, it will be discussed, will the decision be made without public concern as to what we're going to do? This is why I'm speaking tonight. First, we have used $250,000 of hotel motel tax for operation and $700,000 per year bond money for maintenance. How many years has this been going on that we bonded $700,000 a year? Does anybody have an answer on that?
Apparently not.
Apparently not. Okay. In that many years, even if it's five, that's $3.5 million. Couldn't we almost build a new convention center for $3.5 million? And it makes me wonder where the $700,000 a year is going to maintain that building. I would like, and I demand actually, an accounting of that as to where that money's been going because $700,000 a year is a lot of money to maintain a building that at one time was supposed to be pristine and being kept up. I've seen this in the Waterloo school systems. I've seen this in the public entities here that they seem to wait until, oh golly, that's beyond repair. Instead of spending $100, $200, $1,000 this year, well, no, we'll just do without it. I saw the convention center because I did maintenance in there on their kitchen equipment. Anyway, also, is there, they talk about promoting a highly trained staff. Is this staff coming from Omaha and they're going to bus them in or truck them in every day? Or are they going to be citizens of Waterloo that are hired and highly trained? I think that needs to be also made sure of before we agree with this entity to come in and take over our Sullivan Brothers Center.
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. Mayor or council, whatever, whoever, if anybody wants to listen. We had the pleasure tonight of listening to some fine veterans. I happen to know a few of those gentlemen and I believe their integrity is probably nonquestionable. And that brings back the idea of the Sullivan Brothers and a lot of people that are complaining about and talking right stiltily, or however you want to look at it, about the name changing and some of the other stuff that we didn't consider. Now, uh, I think we can get a compromise in that area, but I, I also get to worrying because we've got a Fred Becker Legion sitting across the river that we did nothing with. That we told them we were gonna do a bunch of stuff, and then we refused to stand back from what we said. And with the amount of, of people that are in back of the Sullivan Brothers, and the people that come up here and support our veterans, I think it's time that we renew that idea. Maybe we oughta check and see what we did and why we did, and why it turned out the way it did, and why they owe so much money for stuff that we should've taken care of. Because we didn't give them a turnkey building, and that's what the original agreement was gonna be. It's a long ways from that, and it still is, so, my thinking. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Any, anyone else?
Wayne Nathan, 548 Cloverdale, Waterloo, Iowa. It's sort of hard for me to understand that you were spending $950,000 a year on maintenance on that Sullivan Brothers. That just doesn't add up with me. Because if it was, it would be, uh, an excellent repair. I don't see it being a bad repair now, but as if, any, any facility that we have, there's this thing called preventive maintenance. The mayor, past mayors and the past administration has failed to do preventive maintenance on this and other, uh, buildings here in Waterloo. And then all at once, and Fourth Street Bridge is another one that comes to mind. And when you fail to do the preventive maintenance and spend an X amount of dollars every year on this, all at once, it becomes a, an atrocity, uh, to fix up. And when you do that, you take and, uh, when you do that, you take and say, "Well, it's cheaper to buy, uh, sell it, it's cheaper to build another one." Another one, another thing I wanna bring to mind, seems like this, uh, city is, uh, doing a reverse Robin Hood. You're taking, uh, giving to the rich on the backs of the poor people. This man, uh, according to the courier, has a portfolio of $550 million. Why are we giving, uh, him a million dollars to take this building when he's got a portfolio of 500 million? It don't add up to me. It just don't add up at all. And, uh, it seems like, uh, we gotta quit giving away everything, and start having these people put some money in it if they want it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Mickey, a motion to file-
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Jacobs.
I'd like to, uh, just let the residents know that we have been tracking the fireworks debacle day by day with calls, emails, picking up trash in my yard, my house, my own house getting hit by missiles. I know there's over 750 calls to the police department, and I know they've been scrambling to kinda keep up with that. I don't know how many tickets were issued, it'd be interesting to know. I guess what I'd like to say is, you know, a couple of us voted no. And we can control, we should control what we can control for the residents of Waterloo, and I think that's what they require of us. You know, to say that the state should deal with this is like pushing an elephant with a rope. You can't do it. Let's control Waterloo, and let's take all the feedback that we've been given. I haven't heard one person tonight say, "Yeah, it was a great, thank you for having fireworks." All I've heard, all these stories, kids, vets, us vets as well, uh, we feel for that. Dogs eating half-shot off fireworks, people can't sleep. Let's take that into account. I would ask my fellow council members to join with Tom Lind and I, to just ban it altogether and just move on with that. So, please, listen to the folks, and, um, let's just put an end to the fireworks.
Now, Mr. Schmidt.
Anybody else? I make a motion to file oral comments?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file oral comments. Uh, any questions or discussion? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, a motion passes. Now the consent agenda. Mr., uh, Mr. Lind, you wish to-
Do we need a motion to approve it?
Pardon me?
Do we need a motion to approve it?
Didn't I do that? Oh, the motion to approve the-
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Okay, now we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Uh, any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I'd just like to add that we have eliminated number eight from the consent agenda.
Is that the ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That it's no longer on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor Protem, and then I wanna make sure I'm clear. So, um, procedurally, all we're doing is basically tabling the item. We're not sending it back to planning and programming, and we're not setting the public hearing.
Is, 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 what's your, your request, Ben Noel?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. It's my understanding you amended the agenda with the vote that was taken to take that off the consent agenda and consider it separately. So then you'll have to take some kind of an action now that you consider it separately. I think your action choices would be to set the date of hearing, to table it, however you'd like indefinitely, or to remand it back to the Planning Commission. It is staff's opinion that remanding it back to the Planning Commission, if the goal is to make changes to it, is the cleanest path there, because at this point, it cannot be brought back up at the Planning Commission unless the city council denies it, and we wait a certain period of time after that. If you table it, we'd have to do more research into when we could bring it back onto the Planning Commission, because no action was taken by can, council. If you remand it back to the Planning Commission, we can put it back on a, on a, the next Planning Commission's available agenda to look at the changes. So, if the goal is to make changes from what is currently proposed, that was proposed by the Planning Commission, the remand action would be the appropriate one. If you wanna set the date of hearing and go ahead and vote on it as it was recommended by the Planning Commission, you could do that as well. Tabling it would be very confusing at this point.
Which is your wish, Mr. Lind?
Uh, Mr. Mayor Protem, I move to, um, set the date of public hearing as of July 24th, 2017. Mr. Mayor Protem, it's been taken off the consent agenda. It's not even pertinent, it's, it's not germane to this council agenda tonight. And the second part of that is that we, there was, I know there was some talk about, um, removing it and considering it separately, but that was never voted on, because the first order of business was the agenda item. So, it's removed from the agenda, it's not there anymore, and the, the, removing it from the consent agenda was with the understanding it was going back to planning and zoning for further review. That is what we voted on.
Mr. Morsi, the, the, what, what I don't understand then, is that we made a motion to approve the agenda, but the consent agenda is always voted on separately. If they, if they were the same, there would be no reason for us to vote on the consent agenda.
Well, uh, Mr. Mayor Protem, then, following that logic, there'd be no reason to vote on anything on the agenda. The consent agenda is items that are set, are, are considered as a package.
Yes.
We look at.
That's correct.
But, our entire document from the time that we do roll call until the, uh, adjournment, is our agenda. And during the discussion of the approval of the agenda, there were motions made for amendments and included deletions, including the deletion of number eight from the consent agenda, with the understanding it was going to planning and zoning for review. That's what I voted in favor of, and that's what the council voted, I believe, uh, with one negative vote. So it's not even on the consent agenda at this point in time. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor-
Mr. Anderson would like to address what you just said.
And Mr. Zellifer can correct me if I'm wrong, but the way the actions were handled, you amended the agenda to take it off, but then you took a separate vote to remove it from the consent agenda. So I would argue that you amended the agenda again with that action, and you all voted on that, so that it is still in play at this point.
Mr. Anderson, we did not vote on removing and consider it separately.
You, yes, you did.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
I, I have a motion, Lind, a motion to consider separately number eight, and they're, of, of the consent agenda, and that was a voice vote, and I have the, um, members voted in favor.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Schmidt?
Don't, don't we, every week, we vote on the agenda in the minutes, then we have oral comments and proclamations, that kind of stuff, and then we vote on the consent agenda? They're two separate votes, Mr. Morsi. I, I don't know what you're talking about, that we only vote on one. Those are two separate motions, two separate votes. And Councilman Lind is talking about the consent agenda. We voted on the regular agenda, it's proposed or amended, we voted on that. Now we're to the consent agenda, and we vote on that, and that's typically where people ask to take an item or two on there off the consent agenda, make it a separate item, because the consent agenda, all these kind of regular things that we don't need to go through item by item, but if a council member or somebody from the public wants to, then we do. I, I think that's what I've been doing for the last 10 years.
Yeah, I, I have to agree with you, Mr. Schmidt. Um, when we do approve the agenda, it includes the consent agenda, but when we get to the consent agenda, those are items that supposedly that we all agree to, we can separately pull one of those, which is what Mr. Lind is asking to do. And when we do approve the consent agenda, it'll be items one through six, okay? So-
Well, the consent agenda, uh, the consent agenda would be items one, is, does it get all the way down to six?
Yes.
And then, 1B, 1B six, right?
Well, it would, it would be, it would be six with the bonds.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, one subsection B, because there's an A and a B, and so it's 1B six. That's what you normally say every week.
Well, I just, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd just like to voice my opposition to, you know, what you stated. I believe that's a wrong ruling. Uh, I believe that we deleted item number eight from the consent agenda, making it non-germane to this agenda. This evening.
Mr. Zellifer, do you have any comments?
It was my understanding this was taken off so that it could be debated separately, as is often the case on the consent agenda. And right now, the option here is for the council to vote to table it, to set it for hearing, or to do what the planning and zoning, uh, folks on this floor have asked, and that is to have it remanded to the Pl, Planning and Zoning Commission. That's what they've recommended. I suggest somebody make a motion for one of those three things, uh, before the hour of midnight strikes.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to second Councilman Lind's vote.
I believe Mr. Lind has, has requested a, the public hearing date to be set. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on setting the date of public hearing. Is any further discussion, Mr. Power?
Uh, Mr. Mayor Protem, I think based on what Noel said, the planner, city planner, uh, our staff, said that he would get it back on Planning and Zoning Commission as soon as he could. I don't understand how we can vote for, to set a date of hearing without putting them, their, pressure on them to, to go through that process of due diligence, and then have it back hopefully by the set. So I can't support, uh, voting for a date yet, until it's been remanded back to Planning and Zoning for their review and their changes to move it forward.
Anyone else?
I, I can support going back to Planning and Zoning, but not a date.
Okay, well, we need to, we need to deal with Mr. Lind's motion, first and second by Mr. Jacobs.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not liaison to planning and zoning, but didn't they, didn't they approve what is sent to the council? I mean, didn't they already approve that?
They did.
So why would we have this conversation?
Uh, I believe they've had second thoughts on this.
Oh, okay.
Based on, we got an email that they have, they wanna reconsider.
Yeah.
So, I think, to probably, you know, to give those folks the opportunity to reconsider, I don't know how we could set a date of hearing without their opportunity to reconsider and make potential changes, and then bring it back whenever that date occurs.
That's correct. Okay. So we have a motion and a second, stick the vote on this? We have a motion and a second to set the date of, of public hearing. Madam, roll call, please.
Mr. Morsi?
No.
Mr. Powers?
No.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay, the, the vote fails. Now-
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, go ahead.
I'll second.
Remand back to Planning and Zoning for further review.
I will second.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second to remand the, the ordinance. Any further discussion on this? Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Lind?
From what I've heard from my constituents, what we don't need in the city of Waterloo are chickens and fireworks. So I don't know why we would go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Committee, who already told us what they wanted and worked for months to come up with a zoning ordinance. And now because one person said they wanna reconsider it, we're gonna send back to them. I don't think we should do that.
I don't know where you're coming with the one person, but they, they, apparently there's been a number of them that have asked to reconsider what they've come up with. Okay?
Could we hear a little about that, please?
Could we what?
The, what the-
Who are the-
Commission, uh, I, I missed that discussion.
Eric Schrader, city planner. There was a, uh, email that, uh, a commission member, um, questioned the ability for, if they could make a motion to reconsider. Uh, procedurally, they, that is not an option. The, uh, administrative rules of the commission provide for an item to be reconsidered at that same meeting, or a request that has been denied to be reconsidered at the next meeting. The request was approved, so there's no provision for reconsider, is it reconsideration for an approved request passed the, the meeting upon which, uh, it occurred. So, the, um, discussion then kind of continued on other options, and I, uh, you know, I, I think there was at least two commission members that expressed an interest in having the item come back before. I'm not sure if there's more. There is at least two that responded in the, the email correspondence, expressing an interest in, in redoing it, relooking at it.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
So how, how long has the Planning and Zoning Commission been working on this?
Um, I'm not real sure on that. Planning staff has been working on the amendment for quite some time. It, it, um, you know, was something that as we would have available time to put to it, we would do some research on, uh, how other communities are regulating it. And then we finally got to the point where we got something assembled to where it was ready to go before the commission. So when we really had kind of a semi-finished product, it was probably about a two-month process, because they met at, I believe, I'm trying to go off of memory here, but I think it was their regular meeting in May, where they kind of first really in-depth looked at it, and they had a special meeting, and then the regular meeting, uh, in June, where they recommended approval in the current format that's been presented to the council.
And so staff worked on it four months, six months, when you're saying a period of time?
Probably, uh, close to two years.
Um, so, then, whatever they came up with, what was the vote on that?
It was unanimous. I don't remember how many commission members were present. I think maybe seven. It was unanimous, but there, uh, despite the fact that it was unanimous, it was definitely, um, a well-debated discussion with, uh, opinions on both sides, from the more restrictive approach to the less restrictive approach. So, I mean, I can't speak for individual commission members, but I, I get the impression that the vote kind of was looked at as a little bit of a middle-ground compromise.
So it was a unanimous vote?
Yes.
And now two of the nine members are asking to have it remanded. Is that what I'm being told?
I believe so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
But, yeah, I don't know the number.
So, Eric, why, why in the 11th hour, as you guys so eloquently- So Eric, why, why in the 11th hour, as you guys so eloquently put last week, did these changes become so important?
I'm not sure.
We got, they got. Because we got an email asking.
Well. From two out of nine?
No, I got an email from Eric.
That had two out of nine.
That number was not there.
I just asked him, Tom.
The number was not in the email.
Eric?
How many, how many people asking for the remand?
I'm aware of two that responded to the email.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I said it wasn't. Democracy. You just said two out of nine.
Excuse me, Mr. Morrissey has the floor.
Democracy is sometimes messy, but in the hopes of everybody getting to be able to speak, this is what this is all about. We're just asking, some people evidently have asked to be heard on this issue again, so why would we deny that to anybody, let alone any of our commissions, which are volunteer citizens from Waterloo? We're just asking them to go back, take a look at it again, and that's what, remanding back to them and getting it back to us as soon as possible.
But apparently, seven of the nine commissioners are fine with their decision.
We don't know that, Councilman Schmidt.
They haven't asked for a remand, Councilman Morrissey.
We don't know that.
Yes, we do.
How do you know that?
Because they haven't.
You've talked to them?
Excuse me. Because they have not asked.
Have you talked to them?
Eric Schrader has talked to them, and he said two of nine have asked. That tells me seven of nine have not. I don't know what they're thinking, but I do know they haven't asked for a remand.
Okay. And the motion is on the table to remand it back.
Yes, okay, so let's get to that, okay? Unless there's any further discussion. Okay, we have a motion, a second to remand this back to the commission. Need a roll call, please.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
I believe I'll vote yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Minority rule.
Now.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
In regards to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, and that would be items one through one B six, minus the items deleted. And also within there, we have the bills re-paid, will be read by.
Mr. Jacobs?
Mr. Mayor Protem, the bill's payment tonight will be an amount of $5,424,258.94, five, comma, four, two, four, comma, two, five, eight, point, nine, four.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I need a roll call, please.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes. Should I vote?
No, you don't need to.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Lynn?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
The bills are paid. We have a couple appointments. Scott Boyd, is he still here?
Yes, he is still here.
And how about Jeff Cook? Is Jeff Cook here? Scott, please stand up. If you'd like to come forward, you certainly may, we just would like to thank you for saying yes to the. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you hanging around. Thanks, Scott. Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Item number two on public hearings is a lease agreement with Cedar Valley For-Rent LLC. That's a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing for that lease agreement with Cedar Valley For-Rent LLC for property located south of 509 Riverside Drive in the amount of $1 for a term ending December 31, 2027. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this first hearing. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, do we have someone? Mr. Dryer, did you wish to speak?
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. First off, who is Cedar Valley For-Rent LLC, and what are they getting for a dollar a year for 10 years?
Mr. Anderson, are you going to address that?
Are they getting to rent my house for a dollar a year?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Cedar Valley For-Rent is Chris Fischels. They are the abutting property owners at 509 Riverside Drive. As you may recall, this is land that was bought with FEMA funds, so therefore, we have restrictions on it, that we cannot use it for anything except for open space. With the rental to them, they will be maintaining and mowing the grass, saving the city money from having to go down there and mow it ourselves.
Fantastic.
First of all, I'm opening the hearing now on this. Is there any comments on file? Written comments on file?
No.
Okay, there's no written comments on file. Now, anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this besides Mr. Dryer?
He can't come back.
Second time.
I can make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second. We have a motion, a second on closing the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion passes.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement with Cedar Valley For-Rent LLC for property located south of 509 Riverside Drive in the amount of $1 for a term ending December 31, 2027, and authorizing Mayor and City Clerk to execute said documents.
Second. We have a motion, a second on this resolution. This is last chance. Anyone wish to address this?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Lynn?
Noel, am I correct? We've rented property down there to several people for the same purpose. It's abutting their land, we can't do anything with it, we can't sell it, we can't build on it. Our benefit is we get maintenance. That is correct. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes. Number three.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Lynn?
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on opportunity to be heard regarding the sale of certain tracts of land formerly being portions of West San Martin Drive located adjacent to Sunnyside Country Club.
Second. We have a motion, a second on this request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion passes. I'll now declare this hearing open, if anyone in the. Did you get any comments on that?
No.
Anybody in the audience that wishes to address this issue?
Me again. Same name, same address. I'd like a little explanation on what we're selling and all of that, and what it's going to be turned into, or what's going to happen with it, or, because this, is this still part of the property that's in litigation down in Des Moines?
No.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. This is the portion of San Martin Drive, generally located west of Galactic Drive, a ways to the creek area, as to best describe it, where the curve is on San Martin. As you may recall, we took all the actions to properly sell this as city property. There was a lawsuit that followed. The Supreme Court of Iowa generally, at the end, decided that this must be considered as state, previously state-owned property, since it was a transfer of jurisdiction in the 1980s. Therefore, we're going back through the proper process to sell state land, as the 306.23 process. As a part of the Supreme Court decision, there was a question about a ability to be heard, so we're taking this extra step in the process to ensure that we're following the court's new decision of 306.3 interpretation with the public's ability to be heard. I do not believe that we have any pending lawsuits on this land at this time, so we are moving ahead to sell it. The successful project in sale of the land would create over 24 lots, or 24 lots to be sold in that area. A recent lot was divided off by Sunnyside Country Club on Fourth Street for a new home that sold for $200,000. So we believe this would be a very successful project for the city of Waterloo and create new housing opportunities.
Mr. Mayor Protem, is this on the south side or the north side of West San Martin?
It is on the north side.
Okay, and I thought that was still in litigation, even though I haven't heard any different at the council meeting?
No, it is not.
Dave Zellifer, city attorney. On, in March of this year, the Iowa Supreme Court made a ruling in favor of the city, gave us some guidelines. This is a statute that's not used all that often, Mr. Dryer, section 306.23, and they gave us the guidelines to finally go ahead and go through and get this done. So we've sent out the proper notices, we've gotten the appraisal done, we've gotten surveyed, and today is the day for the public to come in and say whether or not they think we did it correctly or not. And then next week, we'll open bids on the property and see what people are going to bid for it. Everybody's in favor of bidding on the property, and so that's what we're doing.
I'll bid a dollar.
Unfortunately, you have to bid at the minimum of at least the appraised value, sorry.
Mr. Mayor Protem? Mr. Zellifer, while you're still up there. So just to be clear, this is, this is the land that's been in dispute for the last six years. This is the land that.
This is Sunnyside South.
Two curves in and 22 lots, potentially.
Twenty-four.
All right, just want to make sure. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor Protem? Mr. Zellifer, what is the appraised value?
You know, I didn't bring the appraisal with me. At one point, Noel, you got a 1.9, 1.2, sorry.
I don't have a total.
Okay.
$318,248.
There are four sections, Mr.?
$783,886. $500,561. And $222,305.
It's about 1.75.
Mr. Mayor Protem, a quick question then, Noel. Sorry. I assume those appraisals, they're very high. I assume the appraiser considered them improved, which they are, and assembled?
He considered them at their present value, which is what the court told us to do.
Okay.
We can get you a copy of the appraisal if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, let me email me the appraisals. But they're not, they just, those, those are the values standing alone with the improvements?
The court, the court asked us to have them appraised in their current condition.
Okay.
That was how, what the numbers were.
Okay.
Noel, if you would, Noel, if you would send those to all the council, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Eric Schrader, city planner. So the appraisal, because it's broken into four different tracts, the appraiser used an assumption of clear title, and clear title is an issue in this. Clear title is what we're trying to resolve by getting through this process. So it creates a real issue when appraising a land, when it's got litigation in the middle of it. So the appraiser used an assumption of clear title, and he looked at the value of the individual lots and essentially divided it out into a prorated share into the four tracts, and that's how it got that value.
Did the Sunnyside South convey back to us that property?
No.
They own it.
Yes. Well, they have a deed to it. Now whether they have clear title to it is a completely separate issue.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Obadall, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Todd Obadall, 124 Amity Drive. Just like to take issue with the idea that this property was transferred in a legal manner. The Iowa Supreme Court said repeatedly it was not, and that's why the contract was voided. And the city argued it was legal, but the Iowa Supreme Court determined otherwise, and the process had to be followed. And once again, I think we should learn from this, and that we don't decide what the law is, as the city, the courts do, and we should follow the court's precedent on this matter when it comes to transferring other properties of the city. Thank you.
Anyone else? Second time.
Mr. Mayor Protem? I move to close hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second. Motion, a second on closing the hearing. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion passes. Number four.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing on the request to fulfill fiscal year 2018 police ammunition needs.
Second. We have a motion, a second on this, the publication of ammunition needs. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. I'll now declare this hearing open. Are there any comments on file?
No.
There's no comments on file. Anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this, for or against? Second time.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Like to make a motion, close the hearing?
Second. We have a motion, a second on closing the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of bid documents, specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost, et cetera.
Second. We have a motion, a second on this resolution. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. A motion, a second on authorization to proceed. Questions? Hearing none, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Motion passes.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids?
Second. We have a motion, a second on to receive and file, instruct the city to read bids. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion passes.
The bidder is Ultramax ammunition of Rapid City, South Dakota, for general ammunition in the amount of $30,767. And Sunset Law Enforcement of Ackley, Iowa, for Hornady .308 ammunition in the amount of $3,575.
Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a warrant of contract to Ultramax ammunition of Rapid City, South Dakota, for general ammunition in the amount of $30,767. of Rapid City, South Dakota, for general ammunition in the amount of $30,767. And award of contract to Sunset Law Enforcement of Ackley, Iowa, in the amount of $3,575 for the Hornady .308 caliber ammunition for the fiscal year 2018 ammunition needs as budgeted.
Second.
Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Resolutions.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, Mr. Lynn.
Should I take form or so?
You sure may.
I move to adopt the following resolutions. Number five is the resolution authorizing Traffic Operations Department to place temporary no parking signs on the east side of St. Francis Drive from Wildwood Road to San Moran Access Road during the reconstruction and closure of West Ninth Street. Number six is a resolution approving the professional service agreement with Shive Hattery Engineering to prepare a traffic safety improvement program application for converting Ridgeway Avenue from four lanes to three lanes, including performing a benefit cost analysis from Bell Air Road to US 63 Sergeant Road, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Number seven is a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Aiment Design of Waterloo, Iowa, for a traffic adaptive signal system and fiber optic communications upgrade at an estimated cost of $122,423, and authorize mayor to execute said document. And number eight is a resolution approving professional service agreement with Aiment Design of Waterloo, Iowa, to conduct a study of the Green Hill Road and Progress intersection improvement project, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the resolutions five through eight. Any questions on any of those items? Hearing none, I need a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
A motion and a second on to receive and file, instruct the city to read bids. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that motion passes.
The bidder is Ultramax ammunition of Rapid City, South Dakota, for general ammunition in the amount of $30,767. And Sunset Law Enforcement of Ackley, Iowa, for Hornady .308 ammunition in the amount of $3,575.
Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving award of contract to Ultramax ammunition of Rapid City, South Dakota, for general ammunition in the amount of $30,767. And award of contract to Sunset Law Enforcement of Ackley, Iowa, in the amount of $3,575 for the Hornady .308 caliber ammunition for the fiscal year 2018 ammunition needs as budgeted.
Second.
Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Resolutions.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, Mr. Lynn.
Should I take form or so?
You sure may.
I move to adopt the following resolutions. Number five is the resolution authorizing Traffic Operations Department to place temporary no parking signs on the east side of St. Francis Drive from Wildwood Road to San Moran Access Road during the reconstruction and closure of West Ninth Street. Number six is a resolution approving the professional service agreement with Shive Hattery Engineering to prepare a traffic safety improvement program application for converting Ridgeway Avenue from four lanes to three lanes, including performing a benefit cost analysis from Bell Air Road to US 63 Sergeant Road, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Number seven is a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Aiment Design of Waterloo, Iowa, for a traffic adaptive signal system and fiber optic communications upgrade at an estimated cost of $122,423, and authorize mayor to execute said document. And number eight is a resolution approving professional service agreement with Aiment Design of Waterloo, Iowa, to conduct a study of the Green Hill Road and Progress intersection improvement project, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the resolutions five through eight. Any questions on any of those items? Hearing none, I need a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Resolutions.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, Mr. Lynn.
Should I take form or so?
You sure may.
I move to adopt the following resolutions. Number five is the resolution authorizing Traffic Operations Department to place temporary no parking signs on the east side of St. Francis Drive from Wildwood Road to San Moran Access Road during the reconstruction and closure of West Ninth Street. Number six is a resolution approving the professional service agreement with Shive Hattery Engineering to prepare a traffic safety improvement program application for converting Ridgeway Avenue from four lanes to three lanes, including performing a benefit cost analysis from Bell Air Road to US 63 Sergeant Road, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Number seven is a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Aiment Design of Waterloo, Iowa, to conduct a study of the Green Hill Road and Progress intersection improvement project, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the resolutions five through eight. Any questions on any of those items? Hearing none, I need a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
A motion and a second on to receive and file, instruct the city to read bids. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that motion passes.
The bidder is Ultramax ammunition of Rapid City, South Dakota, for general ammunition in the amount of $30,767. And Sunset Law Enforcement of Ackley, Iowa, for Hornady .308 ammunition in the amount of $3,575.
Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving school resource agreement with Waterloo Community School District to provide five school resource officers in the schools for fiscal year 18 in the amount of $222,523, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 14 is a resolution approving the contracted education proposal for the Hartman Reserve Stormwater Education Program in the amount of $2,570.14, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
And then you said after that-
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Eighteen is a resolution approving submission of grant application to the Otto Schultz Foundation in the amount of $100,000 to fund an outdoor fitness court at the Cedar Valley Sportsplex.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second on the resolutions 13, 14, and 18.
Do we do 12?
Yes.
Yeah, I did 12.
Yeah, Mr.-
Okay.
Mr. Schmidt did 12.
Sorry.
Questions?
Got somebody up there.
Yes. Now we go first. Anybody here just to address this?
I had a couple of questions. Just item number 13. That's, Joe, that's just the same numbers as last year, correct? That's the five we did last year, five we've been doing pretty much every year.
Joe Live, Police Captain, yeah, it's the same local officers with an increase in funds, I think about $6,000.
Great. Okay, thank you. And then also on item number 18. Paul, could you just kind of give us, or give the audience a normal overview of what that's about?
Sure. Paul Hudding, Major Services Director. This is a, we're asking for your approval to allow the city staff to submit a grant application to the new Otto Schultz Foundation. This is their first grant cycle. They have a heavy emphasis in their, I guess their goals and their stated priorities is for, one of the big priorities is for health and fitness. And so that kind of drives this as what we think would be a good application for an outdoor fitness court. It would be open to the public and free, but it would be located near the sportsplex, the Cedar Valley Sportsplex. The sportsplex staff could use it to program certain classes, but it would by and large be open to the public, and there would be fitness routines that folks could utilize their phones and other electronic devices to learn how to use it. So there's no city match. There is a $10,000 funding available from the National Fitness Foundation, and we just think it would be good improvement for downtown Waterloo.
So where are you thinking it would be located?
We have a grassy area. There's the child's kind of a fenced area where we, the childcare, the kids go out there and play. It would be immediately adjacent. Outside the fence, there's another grassy area. So it would be adjacent to the sportsplex, right across the street from the Expo Plaza.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else on council? We had someone in the audience wish to speak.
I'm not quite sure. That was my question. I was wondering if it was going to be across the street where when you go to the sportsplex, you park, and then they're going to take up the parking. Just re-explain that to me.
We would be putting it in an existing grass area, so we would not be removing any parking, but it is adjacent to a parking area.
So it's across from-
It's the parking area that's kind of behind the building where the soccer folk center and-
Oh, okay.
So-
Okay, that's my question.
Deer, plant, peacock, if that says anything for you.
Okay.
Strip club. Get that strip club.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. My question also is on item 18. First off, I understand this is their first year, that's great, but could that money not have been used elsewhere, like a ball diamond repair? Because that's got to do with exercise, et cetera. Near the plex, do we already own that property? But it's going to be across the street from the sportsplex, across the busy traffic street. It's going to be across the parking lot.
Go ahead, Paul.
It's on the same side of Jefferson Street as the sportsplex, and it's adjacent to the sportsplex. So no, you wouldn't have to cross the street. It is also adjacent to the parking lot behind the fieldhouse end of the-
You're talking west or south?
Well, now you're going to ask me directions. It would be southeast, yeah.
Okay.
East side of the-
Okay, towards 63. Does that help you? Towards 63?
That would be west. That would be west. East is the other way.
Okay, but there's a building there that used to be-
The Public Market Building is-
Okay.
Toward that end of the property, but this is not in that plaza. It's in a grassy area that's part of the yard of the sportsplex.
Okay, okay.
Part of that property.
I guess, thank you, sir. My other comment is that I thought we weren't supposed to have any money in the sportsplex as citizens. This is a grant, understand that, but that grant could be used somewhere else where we're fixing a ball diamond, fix that ball diamond. The sportsplex is a fantastic place. They need more? Thank you.
Good news is we've had great opportunity for grants from a number of other agencies for our ball diamonds, and they're all in excellent repair. But I understand the reasoning that there could be other projects. We think this fits the stated priorities of the Schultz Foundation. It also would be open to the public, so it's not really, you don't have to pay a sportsplex membership to use it.
Thanks, Paul.
If it happens.
Yeah. Okay, 13, 14, and 18. Need a roll call, please.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Number 19.
I'd like to make a motion and receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance, amending the 2007 City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by amending Title V Police Regulations, Chapter V Chronic Nuisance Properties, Section 1 Definitions by adding "O", fireworks-
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving school resource agreement with Waterloo Community School District to provide five school resource officers in the schools for fiscal year eighteen in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number fourteen is a resolution approving the contract, contracted education proposal for the Hartman Reserve Stormwater Education Program in the amount of two-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy dollars and fourteen cents, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And then you said after that?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Eighteen is a resolution approving submission of grant application to the Otto Schultz Foundation in the amount of one-hundred-thousand dollars to fund an outdoor fitness court at the Cedar Valley Sports Plex. Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second on the resolutions thirteen, fourteen, and eighteen.
Do we do twelve?
Yes.
Yeah, I did twelve.
Yeah, Mr. Schmidt did twelve.
Sorry.
Questions? Yes? No, we go first. Anybody, anybody here just to address this?
I had a couple of questions. Just item number thirteen, that's, Joe, that's just the same numbers as last year, correct? That's the five we did last year, five we've been doing pretty much every year.
Joe Lattimer, Police Captain, yeah, it's the same number of officers with an increase in funds, I think about six thousand dollars.
Great, okay, thank you. And then also on item number eighteen, Paul, could you just kind of give us, or give the audience a little overview of what that's about?
Sure. Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. This is a, we're asking for your approval to allow the city staff to submit a grant application to the new Otto Schultz Foundation. This is their first grant cycle. They have a heavy emphasis in their, I guess their goals and their stated priorities is for, one of their big priorities is for health and fitness. And so, that kind of drives this as a, what we think would be a good application for an outdoor fitness court. It would be open to the public and free, but it would be located near the sportsplex, the Cedar Valley Sports Plex. The sportsplex staff could use it to program certain classes, but it would, by and large, be open to the public, and there would be fitness routines that folks could utilize their phones and other electronic devices to learn how to use it. So, there's no city match. There is a ten-thousand-dollar funding available from the National Fitness Foundation, and we just think it would be good improvement for downtown Waterloo.
So, where are you thinking it would be located?
We have a grassy area. There's the child's kind of a fenced area where we, the childcare, the kids go out there and play. It would be immediately adjacent, and outside the fence, there's another grassy area. So, it would be adjacent to the sportsplex, right across the street from the Expo Plaza.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else on council? We had someone in the audience wish to speak?
I'm not quite sure. That was my question. I was wondering if it was going to be across the street where when you go to the sportsplex, you park, and then they're going to take up the parking. Just re-explain that to me.
We would be putting it in an existing grass area, so we would not be removing any parking, but it is adjacent to a parking area.
So, it's across from...
It's the parking area that's kind of behind the building where the soccer folks are under, and...
Oh, okay.
So...
Okay, that's my question.
Near Plaid Peacock, if that says anything for you.
Strip code.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. My question also is on item eighteen. First off, I understand this is their first year, that's great, but could that money not have been used elsewhere, like a ball diamond repair? Because that's got to do with, with exercise, et cetera. Near the plex, do we already own that property? But it's going to be across the street from the sportsplex, across the busy traffic street. It's going to be across the parking lot.
Go ahead, Paul.
It's on the same side of Jefferson Street as the sportsplex, and it's adjacent to the sportsplex. So, no, you wouldn't have to cross the street. It is also adjacent to the parking lot, behind the fieldhouse end of the...
You're talking west or south?
Well, now you're going to ask me directions. It would be southeast, yeah.
Okay.
East side of the...
Okay, towards sixty-three. Does that help you? Towards sixty-three?
That would be west.
That would be west.
That would be west. East is the other way.
Okay, but there's a building there that used to be...
The Public Market Building is toward that end of the property, but this is not in that plaza. It's in a grassy area that's part of the yard of the sportsplex.
Okay, okay.
Part of that property.
I guess, thank you, sir. My other comment is that I thought we weren't supposed to have any money in the sportsplex as citizens. This is a grant, understand that, but that grant could be used somewhere else where we're fixing a ball diamond. Fix that ball diamond. The sportsplex is a fantastic place. They need more? Thank you.
Good news is we've had great opportunity for grants from a number of other agencies for our ball diamonds, and they're all in excellent repair. But I understand the reasoning that there could be other projects. We think this fits the stated priorities of the Schultz Foundation. It also would be open to the public, so it's not really, you don't have to pay a sportsplex membership to use it.
Thanks, Paul.
If it happens.
Yeah. Okay, thirteen, fourteen, and eighteen. Need a roll call, please.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Number nineteen.
Like to make a motion and receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance, amending the twenty-two thousand seven City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by amending Title V Police Regulations, Chapter V Chronic Nuisance Properties, Section One, Definitions by adding "O" fireworks to definitions.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this motion. Questions?
We have a little overview for the audience at home.
Captain Joe Lattimer, Police Department. Basically, this amends the code enforcement or the chronic nuisance ordinance to add this as one of the violations that would make you qualify for a chronic nuisance. So, if we went to a residence that had a fireworks complaint and could not identify the perpetrator, we can still tell them to stop, and that could count as one of the three violations for the year. So, if we do it more than three times and unable to identify the perpetrator, the landowner could be contacted and asked to abate that nuisance. Now, it's not going to happen as quick as the neighborhood would like, but normally the landlords are pretty good about abating it within a few days of notification.
So, can I ask you, and I'm not arguing with this by any means, but can I ask you, I'm told that we cannot go out and give you a ticket, code enforcement, give you a ticket for obviously blowing grass in the street because we didn't catch you blowing it, even though we can see there's a whole pile of grass out in the street from when you mowed it. We can't issue a ticket for that, Mr. Zellifer, if you're paying to listen. But here, basically, you're going to be going on a neighbor's word. And again, I'm not arguing this at all, but it just seems to me like we're setting ourselves up here for something that's probably not going to be enforceable.
Well, one's not the other. You're talking the enforcement of the fireworks law, the state law, and that would require a neighbor's word.
Okay.
This adds it to the chronic nuisance ordinance, which isn't a ticket. It is, if, it incurs a bunch of violations, a lot of music, shootings, stabbings, prostitution, loitering. There's a whole list of violations that qualifies as a chronic nuisance. If you have three of them in a twelve-month period, then the chief contacts the landowner, whether it's the person committing the ordinance or the landlord, and explains to them, hey, you've become a chronic nuisance, please address and abate the issue. And they have a certain number of days to get back to him with their abatement plan, and we move forward from there.
But in your examples of prostitution and shootings and knifings, you've got some evidence. And my point is, you go out there, fireworks are all done. You're basing the call on a neighbor's complaint, assuming you don't catch them in the act. Now, if you do, that's a totally different conversation, but I guess I'm just, and maybe that's a question for Mr. Zellifer rather than you from a legal standpoint.
Well, I think it's based on the neighbor's complaint alone. I mean, if you walk into the backyard and there's a pile of fireworks there, and the neighbor complained that there's fireworks coming from your residence, the conversation would probably be, hey, stop shooting fireworks off. You can't do it, it's after hours or whatever the rule you're violating is. And if, you know, tomorrow night, we go back for the same thing, the next day, we go back for the same thing, from December first through January fifteenth, we're at your house for the same thing, you fall into the chronic nuisance, not the citation part of the violation of state law part.
And so, then what's the repercussion for that?
There's a abatement plan. If there's no abatement plan, then you can start being billed for the calls to your house.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Mr. Mayor Protem. Joe?
Mr. Morrissey?
Joe, it's my understanding that what would happen here, there would be a municipal infraction. This is part, an ordinance results in a municipal infraction.
Correct. It'll follow the same chronic nuisance property that we've been using for a few years now to abate different nuisances, whether it's loud music, parties, fights, a variety of things.
Okay, and, and the reason I'm asking that is because what I was told, when we passed the fireworks thing and allowing the five days, it was a resolution, not an ordinance. And because it was a resolution, that meant that the municipal infraction charge could not be levied, that it had to actually go through a court, to a magistrate or a district court, which would result in them imposing a fine determined by them. And I think that maybe City Attorney Zellifer could address that. But, so, if we were passing this, a municipal fraction is different than what would occur with the fireworks, what we just went through here, and being cited. Is that, I mean, what's the difference here?
The, if you're lighting fireworks off outside the timeframe and you're breaking the law, that's a citable offense. If you're violating city ordinance, that's a different offense, and the chronic nuisance is yet a third, or chronic nuisance property is yet a third type of offense.
And they would all have different fine schedules?
Different fine schedule, different court requirements, even different rules of law that Mr. Zellifer probably better have to speak to.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else on council? Mr. Obradall, you need to...
Yes, yes, thank you, Councilman Welker, Mayor Protem. I rise in support of this. I think it's good to add to the, to the chronic nuisance law. However, in the chronic nuisance law, it says, ordinance rather, it says, "The purpose of this ordinance is to establish a systematic procedure for effectively abating properties that negatively impact the quality of life in neighborhoods." In my conversation with landlords, one of their problems with this, with this ordinance and how it's carried out is that they're not given notification until the third offense happens. Every single landlord has to register with the City of Waterloo. We have those records on file. I would ask an amendment to this, or have the ordinance added to the enforcement aspect of the ordinance, an idea that on the first offense, the first citation, for a property that is a rental property in which the owner is registered with the City of Waterloo, that we notify them at that time, so perhaps they can intervene and abate subsequent, subsequent violations that we wouldn't, they wouldn't be aware of until it happened three times, and the neighbors have been disturbed three times. After the first time or the second time, if they're aware of this, then perhaps they might choose to take the action of a notice to cure, which would be nice for the neighbors prior to the third offense. And I think it would be, it'd be a proactive step to help out our landlords and help out, help out the good landlords and help out the good neighbors, to notify the owners of the properties when their tenants are violating the law. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Need a roll call, please?
Mr. Mayor Protem, so could we have a opinion from Mr. Zellifer on that? I mean, I hate to approve this if we end up having to go back and tweak it a little bit, or should we table it now? I don't know. Mr. Zellifer, if you heard what was offered?
Yeah, which, which part are you talking about?
Part about the landlords.
Well, what the chronic nuisance ordinance does is it allows the police chief, then to contact the owner of the property, whether it's a landlord or someone else, and say, hey, let's sit down and make a plan to abate this. You have thirty days to contact me, we'll sit down and we do a plan then. Nobody gets a ticket after that, before that. What the third violation in a year means is, hey, we're having some trouble, get in here and let's talk about this and let's have a plan. So, what Mr. Obradall is talking about is exactly what we are doing.
But, but I think what he says is the landlord doesn't hear about it until you get to the third, the third call, where you, as a homeowner, you would be notified on the first call, correct?
You'd be the one, ah, well, could be, sure.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think that was...
Obviously, you would be, yeah.
I'm just thinking about this again from a do the right thing.
Okay. Anyone else? Need a roll call, please?
Mr.? Mr. Schmidt?
I would vote in favor of the motion for the first reading.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
I would vote in favor of the motion, but do feel that, as Councilman Schmidt pointed out, more communication would always be best between the police department and the landlords.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion, a second, suspending the rules.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Schmidt.
So, here, I would ask that we would not vote to do this so that we can have further discussion about this and make sure that we're following correct procedure.
If you do not support the motion to suspend the rules, that would happen anyway. Okay? Need a roll call, please?
Mr. Wel, Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Okay, we'll take that up next week. Items, number twenty.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Item twenty is a motion received, filed, considered, and passed for the first time in ordinance amending the two thousand eight traffic code by adding subsection one seventeen A, Green Hill Road and Progress Avenue, full actuated to section five forty, obedience to official traffic control devices.
Second.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second on amending the traffic code. Questions? Here we go. Need a roll call, please?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion, a second, suspending the rules. Roll call.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Motion, a second, adopt the ordinance. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes. Somebody wants to just take the last four, they certainly...
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Lynn.
I move to approve the request of JSA Development LLC and Twin Trees for an extension to repair sidewalks at four oh two East Fourth Street and three twenty-six to three thirty East Fourth Street, Mulberry Street Side, one twenty-eight East Fourth Street, Sycamore Street Side, three fifteen East Fifth Street, East Fifth and Lafayette Street Sides, and six twenty-four Sycamore Street. A request of American Pattern Storage for our extension repair sidewalks at one oh six to one sixteen East Eleventh Street. A request of Verna Beer for an extension to repair sidewalks at twenty-three thirty-five Lafayette Street. And finally, a request of Shimp Construction for an extension to repair sidewalks, sidewalks at seven oh one Franklin Street, three oh nine Juan Row Street, four oh seven East Seventh